Good evening. It's 6 o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a work session meeting in the Manitou Springs City Council for June the 22nd, 2021. I'd like to go ahead and start with the roll call. Counselor Wolf?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Bremner?
Here.
Councilwoman Shada?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Chandler?
Present.
Mayor Protem?
Present.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just as a kind of a quick introduction to technology, we'll be using these microphones tonight. I think probably those of us, you know, on council are familiar with it, but if you're not and you're asked to come up and speak, you want to press the center button and you'll see the light go green. Okay, that means you can speak. You have to be very close to the microphone, so I hope you can all hear me. I'm about three inches away. So you might get interrupted and asked to move closer to the microphone. Sometimes we forget to turn them on and stuff. If you're not speaking, we'd ask that you turn it off. All right, so that's a quick introduction to technology. Okay, so we have one item tonight to discuss. This meeting is devoted entirely to a joint Manitou City Council meeting, Manitou Springs Planning Commission meeting to discuss the rewrite of the municipal zoning and subdivision code. With that, I think Christine will give you the floor and ask us to take us into an introduction, and then I would like to get a comment from Chairman Delwich, if you would allow me that. Okay, thanks Christine.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Christine Lowenberg, Planning Director with the City of Manitou Springs. Tonight, we're continuing our joint sessions with Planning Commission along with City Council to look at where we are in this project. This particular initiative is specifically focused on our subdivision and zoning chapters in the municipal code. We have been engaged over the last several months with intensive community outreach and engagement. We have continued to meet with stakeholders. We have had on our website now our second round of surveys gathering community input and perspectives. Tonight's session is to be focused on design guidelines and standards as well as uses. And so before I turn it over to our guests, should I turn it back to Chairman Delwich?
Just for a minute, yeah, I'd ask Alan to just briefly remind us of what we're here for, what the problems are that we're trying to solve, and maybe some of the points you think would make for a good solution.
John, thanks for putting me on the spot. I'm Alan Delwich, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and we've got a lot of really experienced people on the commission, and over the years, we get frustrated every now and then. There are things that just, we can't quite fit into what's in our zoning code. We can't make rational decisions. So what we're trying to do is streamline and modernize, and tonight we're looking, one of the issues that has been the most challenging for us is the fact we don't have any design guidelines, and there are places in our town where having some sort of notion of what we want to look like and present ourselves, it would be nice to have those, some framework to do that. And another area that we're going to look at are just general guidelines or requirements for various parts of the city, or different zones. We have very general zone designations, general residential, low density, hillside, low density, commercial, and so on. And just because of the nature of how Manitou has evolved, we have 120-year-old buildings, we have two-year-old buildings, and so sometimes the one-size-fits-all paradigm we have is failing us, and that's what we're going to look at. And hopefully tonight, we'll just get a really, get a sense of what everybody is thinking, and we'll go forward from there.
Thank you, Alan. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I think that was helpful, helped me focus a little bit. Christine, back to you.
Great, thank you. You know, and to tie off, you know, jump off that point, that Chairman Delwich made, staff have equally as difficult of a time navigating some of the modern complexities that we see, what folks want to do in the community, and how best to engage. So we're really looking forward to getting clarity, I guess, and working through this and understanding truly what the community is looking for. So with that, I'd like to introduce two of, two members of the consultant team. You guys have met them online. This is our first time in person, Jennifer Gardner and Melissa Ruth with the Logan Simpson team. And there are other members of the team that I believe are watching on live stream. So I'll turn it over to you guys. All right. Actually, I'm going to move the microphone over here so I can look at you guys, and then we'll move it back for Melissa. All right, so thank you very much for having us in person. It's wonderful to see you all in three dimensions, and really looking forward to having a good conversation tonight on this topic. So can I get the presentation going? Oh yeah, so this will be similar to our last few meetings. We're going to do a little Mentee exercise. So I see a lot of you have your computers. You can, if they're hooked up to the internet, you can do it that way, or you can do it on your phone. The mentee.com is where you're going to go, and that code at the top, and it's at the top of all the slides, so feel free to get set up now or as we go. Is the mouse going to work? Well, it's working. Okay. Do you want to run up there, and then I can do the same for you? Thanks for your patience. We found that the standard clickers don't work with this program, so we tried, thought maybe the mouse would work, but I think it just needs those right and left toggle keys. All right, so we're going to go over a little bit tonight of the summer schedule, kind of the three-month schedule moving forward, what topics we're going to be covering with you all over the next few meetings, an introduction to design guidelines, and then get into a guided discussion on design guidelines. And then we are going to talk, as Chairman Delwich said, a little bit about zoning tied to those design guidelines specifically, and then wrap it up with some next steps. The summer schedule, we're in June right now, so we do have our design guidelines mini questionnaires out on the website right now. We have four mini questionnaires. Some of the questions we're asking you tonight are on those questionnaires, so you'll get a little sneak peek into what those say. And then we have our joint work session that we're here for right now. In July, we're going to dive into sustainability, and so we'll have an additional set of mini questions on sustainability, and then we'll bring that same topic to you all on July 27th for another joint work session. August, we're going to dive into parking and landscaping, so those will be, again, some more questionnaires on parking and landscaping. And if you see a theme here, what we're doing is we take these questionnaires out to the public, we're taking the same topics to our advisory committee and bringing those same topics to you all at about the same time, so we can gather all the feedback for these topics, take it back to the drawing board, put together our proposed language, and then bring that back to you. So when we're done with this series of three meetings, the next series will be to start to actually look through the proposed language. So that's how that will look moving forward. This is a new graphic you all haven't seen, or some of you may have seen, but it's just to start to understand how the public, the advisory committee, and then you all kind of work together on this process. So, you know, we have the public at large that's seeing kind of the larger picture. The advisory committee is getting into some pretty specific detail on a lot of this, as are you all, and then you've got planning and zoning and city council. And the advisory committee is, you know, our sounding board, so we bring to them ideas and thoughts and get kind of some, it's kind of, you know, the temperature reading of the community, and we've put together that advisory committee to be a nice cross-section of the community, so we're hopefully getting many different voices in the committee. And a little bit of technical expertise you'll see throughout, and you all have the same, you know, everyone in this group on the advisory committee as well have different specialties, and so we can, you know, you can weigh in on those specialties as well. Next slide. So I know you've seen this before. We just wanted a quick reminder of the resulting themes from our assessment report. I'm not going to read through it, but these are those 11 themes from which we're drawing these topics to discuss with you all and with the advisory committee throughout the next several months. So, you know, like we've talked about before, simplifying, updating definitions, clarifying zone districts, looking at parking standards, landscaping standards, revising non-conformities, updating sign regulations. So that's that list that we are continually working through, and we're going to keep chipping away at the topics. Yes?
Hopefully, I can ask a question.
Absolutely.
But I do, and the update parking requirements, and this could be my ignorance of zoning in general, but is that going to incorporate things like public transportation facilities, and biking, and pedestrian facilities, and so on, as opposed to just parking requirements?
It can to some degree. So we typically are looking at, specifically at the parking requirements, how many spaces are required. That's the standard piece of it. But we can look a little bit at transit, you know, transit stops, looking at complete street type situations, you know, trying to encourage the pedestrian activity, bikeways, things like that. So there are things we can write into the code that can get us there, so.
As a single member of this panel, I would very much like to see those complete streets incorporated into this, as opposed to just concentrating on parking.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Tip Reagan on the Planning Commission. Just to follow up on that, I've talked to a lot of our Manitoids about what we're doing here, our project, and one of the things I hear most about is concern about traffic, and that for many people has a huge impact on everything we're talking about. They would say, "Well, in principle, I might like X, Y, and Z, but if it's going to mean that we have more traffic, I'm not going to be in favor of it." And so I actually just want to echo that I think to really, I think it's going to be very, it's going to be imperative to be focusing on all of these other aspects of transportation, walking, all that, to make it possible for us to do the other things that we really want to do.
Absolutely. Yeah, zoning codes, as you guys have probably figured out to this point, it's so multifaceted. You know, you can't look at one without the other. So even though tonight we're isolating design guidelines, you know, we're looking at architectural styles and forms and streetscapes and things, and, you know, there's the parking component to that, and there's the landscape and drainage component to that, and it's really all, you know, all one big picture, so, thank you. Any other questions so far? Okay. All right, moving on. All right, so design guidelines. Design guidelines can, it's a pretty broad term, so it can mean, you know, detailing the architectural vision for an area. It could have nothing to do with architecture and just speak to the forms and sizes and setbacks and step backs and, you know, roof forms and different types of features. So it doesn't have to be specific to architectural style, but it can be, we can kind of incorporate really anything in design guidelines. It's just looking at the, kind of like a sliding scale of what's the appropriate elements to include, to regulate or to look at. So we describe what is intended for compatible design, rather than saying you need to be compatible with your neighbors. We try to figure out what that compatibility is and describe it in words and graphics instead of leaving that open-ended. Identifying unique character-defining features, like I said, rather than maybe architectural style, we can look at, you know, a certain area might have all pitched roofs and little front porches, and that's really significant of a certain area, and we want to continue that style or those elements. And then we can always identify elements for preservation, so if there's historic features or historic buildings, and there's certain aspects that feel, you know, like they really need to be preserved, that this is another area that we can touch on that. Next slide. So the community expressed a desire in our first questionnaire to implement design guidelines for certain focused areas. So we're going to look at a map next. Some of these areas you'll see from previous presentations, I think we've added one, so, and all four of these were identified in the comprehensive plan as opportunity areas, so areas of opportunity to build on a little bit. So we have the Manitou Avenue West End, down on the far west end, kind of the gateway to the city from the west. We have the East Manitou Avenue, so these are all areas outside of the historic districts. So the historic districts cover a lot of design guidelines, and these are outside of there. So the East Manitou Avenue is kind of, you know, east of downtown. Then you have El Paso Boulevard, Becker's Lane area, and then we have the URA. So we have questionnaires out right now for all four of these areas, as I said. Here's just a quick cross-section of what we're hearing. The El Paso Boulevard, Becker's Lane has a few more responses you'll see on there. We've been pushing out Facebook posts, or the city's been pushing out Facebook posts on these questionnaires, and I believe that was the first post that went out, so I think people took that questionnaire. You can take all four when you go to the website, but I think people are taking kind of one at a time, which is why we divided it up into four different questionnaires. So you can see that we're getting, you know, we've had 46 responses to the El Paso Boulevard, Becker's Lane, nine for West Manitou, 31 for East Manitou, and nine for the urban renewal area. Those have only been out, what, maybe two weeks? So we'll keep pushing out notices that they're available, keep advertising those, and hopefully see those numbers continue to go up. So this is where we're going to start getting your feedback. So out of the areas that we talked about, the West Manitou Avenue, El Paso and Becker's, urban renewal area, and East Manitou, this is a sliding scale, so on your phone in Mentee, if you want to say, you know, that you, we're looking for whether design guidelines are needed for new and redevelopment. So if you're all the way to the left, that means you strongly disagree. All the way to the right, you strongly agree. Somewhere in the middle, maybe you think, hmm, maybe we should, we're not sure, we're not sure what that threshold is, so. So while the last few people are putting in their thoughts on this, I do want to open to a little discussion, and I'd like to hear why people chose, you don't have to say which ones you've chosen or anything, but I'd like to just hear a little bit of why. It looks like West Manitou Avenue, strongly agree that there should be design guidelines, urban renewal area, and East Manitou Avenue, and we're a little bit less on El Paso and Becker's, and that's very consistent with what we've heard from other groups and from the public. So any thoughts on why you guys think we are landing in about this realm, or why you chose what you did? Yes. Do you want me to come? Okay, okay. All right, did you get that figured out? Awesome. All right, does anyone want to jump in and talk about this a little? We have a lot of things to talk about tonight, so if you want to save your energy for the next one, that's fine, too. Yes?
So Judith, by the way, Judith Chandler. So one of the reasons I think that the historic district has remained such an amazing district is because of the rigor, the rigorous standards that we have imposed on this area, and it's why people want to live here, and it's why people want to visit here. And I believe that it is extremely disingenuous if we don't impose specific design guidelines for all of the other four areas in keeping with the same spirit and same look and feel of the town. Otherwise, because we're very close to Colorado Springs, and a lot of their urban development is high-rise, very urban dense, very urban canyon construction, and I just really want Manitou as a whole town to rally each area regardless of where we live and support each district and area in being as unique as the historic district downtown. So I put fives on all of them.
Great, that's a really good perspective. I like hearing from that side. Yes.
Yeah, I completely agree with everything she just said. We were discussing this this morning, and I want people to know when they cross the border that they're in Manitou, and I think creating a unique, the sole, a lot of understanding Manitou is the way it looks. And I'm still traumatized because when the Holiday Inn down the street got approved, so that's coloring a lot of my views, but if we just have cookie-cutter buildings in the city, I think that we've missed the boat. We've done a disservice to our community.
So I think the reason that West Manitou Avenue skews so far to the right is because it's sort of the wild west out there, and I think it's important that we get specific design guidelines there in particular, because there's so much potential for it to go wrong, also a lot of potential for it to become very beautiful in keeping with the rest of Manitou. So that's the area I think is the most important.
One thing I just want to point out is that our N here number is a relatively small number, and in fact, the differences there are not very statistically significant. I know in the past, we've talked about the West End being more, you know, that there was greater buy-in to have guidelines and whatnot, but what I look at there with this number is that in fact, there's widespread agreement here that there should be design guidelines across the board. That's what I'm seeing here.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo everything that's been said, especially what Nancy said, is when we get to Manitou, we want people to know they're in Manitou, and they're not just one more block of Colorado Springs. And so I think that's really important, and as we get into more detail, I have idea, you know, I'm still struggling with what true design guidelines will be, and I'm not sure that what I've seen so far makes me feel any more comfortable, but I think we'll all talk more when we get there.
Great. Yeah, I will say as an outsider, every time I come up here, I feel like when you cross into Manitou, I know I'm in Manitou Springs. It's, you've done a great job so far, so. Great, well, let's move on to the next slide, because we're, oh.
Actually, during the work sessions, we just restrict the conversation to the City Council and, in this case, the Planning Commission. If there would be no objection to council, if we could get through the main part of our meeting and then perhaps entertain public comment at the end, we could perhaps do that, if there's no objection. We've got a pretty full agenda, and one of the things we, we were kind of thinking about the idea of taking some of the fourth Tuesdays off, you know, as far as a work session, but then we decided that we really want to get this zoning rewrite done by the end of the year. Our funding goes through there. This, I think, the planners, the planning commission people have, and planning staff have struggled with a lot of these problems, and our goal is really to get this thing wrapped up by Christmas, or, you know, by the end of the year. So these are dedicated evenings to focus on a handful of topics and move through. Now, we don't want to preclude public participation, and I think at some point, we will have some general public meetings as we begin to flesh this out, so that the public has an opportunity to be involved, but right now, we really need to focus on our work. So thank you for your understanding. Okay.
So I have a question about what you just said, Mayor, if I may. So yes or no, are we going to allow public comment at the end of this meeting, or does it depend on what time it is? Just so the people out there know.
Okay, that's a good point. I would say if we get to a point, say by 8:30, no later than 8:30, that we've, and people are willing and would like to talk, would that be, would that seem reasonable?
It's up to them, Matt.
Okay, I'll ask for a show of hands in the audience. I mean, if you wanted to speak and we conducted business and got it kind of the main core of our business tonight, would you wait till 8:30 to make your comments?
I would.
Okay, would you be? Would you be willing to wait till 8:30 till we?
My right.
Okay. Well, could you do it in three minutes or less, Corinne? The council, do you have any objection? We'll just hear Corinne, and, okay, come on, Corinne, let's go ahead and do it. So Corinne, if you'd give us your full name and address, and then if you could keep your remarks to three minutes, that'd be cool.
Certainly, and thank you for indulging me. You all know I'm not shy. But my name is Corinne Toll. I live at 457 Crystal Hills Boulevard in Manitou. And one of the things that I don't want to lose sight of is PUDs. Planned Unit Developments. A planned unit development may or may not fall within specific design guidelines. What it is, it is taking a parcel, and we used to have an ordinance about planned unit development, and we don't anymore, and the city really needs that because we have so many unique parcels. And these parcels, and please somebody more knowledgeable than I correct me if I'm wrong, but these parcels can be given some latitude for development that might be broader than code provisions. So this allows for some of those funky sites like in the urban renewal area, which I think they do allow for that, but in other areas as well. If we don't, if we require strict adherence to design guidelines, I just don't want the PUD to be lost. It has a purpose, and it allows for some housing that we might need, so, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Corinne. Okay, let's go ahead and push on.
Okay, had to find my voice there. Next slide. All right, so we're going to get into kind of a visual preference-type survey, and the reason that we do this is it's for us to be able to dissect the pictures that you like. So if you say, "I really liked one, two, and three," or something, then if you say, you know, "It's the windows I liked," or "It was the porches that felt right for that area," or "The roof pitches," or "The public open spaces," that's why we do these kind of exercises, to really help us understand what you're thinking is the right visual for the area, and then we can write that into the text. So this is looking at the West Manitou Avenue area, and we have a series of six images, and we have also other and none of the above. And if you do other or none of the above, I'd like to know why, because that's also very important. So, and I will say through all of the next few slides, we've already established with you all and with the community that embracing Fountain Creek where possible, especially in that urban renewal area, where we've talked about, you know, being able to embrace the creek with the, almost like two-sided architecture, where you're not just fronting on the road, but you also have some sort of engagement with the creek, rather than turning our back to the creek. That's definitely already been kind of noted, so we're going one step further. So you'll not see anything about the So you'll, you'll not see anything about the creek in these images and that was intentional to, to speak to some of the other elements, so. All right, if memory serves me correctly, you guys are voting almost exactly the same as the last group. So we're getting consistency and that's fantastic. So adaptive reuse of existing buildings is, is high on the list. Mixed use with a historic focus is high on the list. Varied building height, there is a question later about building height specifically, so we won't get into too much detail on that here, but if you do want to speak to it, please do, but we'll, we'll kind of discuss building height within all four at the same, you know, all four areas kind of side by side in a, in a later slide. But wide sidewalks with restaurant space. Now, one thing we have talked about that's kind of becoming, coming to the surface with the kind of wide sidewalk concept is, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about pervious areas and tree canopy and we don't want to lose sight of that either. So it's finding a balance between allowing, you know, it's, it's kind of that ebb and flow. So allowing pockets for outdoor restaurants, outdoor seating, outdoor vibrant spaces, but not just paving everything. So that's kind of, I think, where this is starting to lean from what I'm hearing from everybody. So, great, mixed use and adaptive reuse just went up even a little further. So any, any discussion on this? Anyone want to jump in and, and share your thoughts on this area and what, what you really want to see it, it look like? So that we can write that in, you know, get the right language in the code to, to result in the, in the right look, yes?
So my question is, are you suggesting that this would require zoning changes? For example, I'm looking at the mixed use with the historic focus and I'm thinking, is that because we want fewer residential lots in town and we would rather have mixed use with the historic focus rather than having pure residential, which would require, I would imagine, a zoning change for at least some of the properties down there? So can you explain that?
Sure. And it, it was an attempt at, you know, figuring out if we were looking for a mix of commercial and residential uses or more of a commercial or more of a residential look. So it's still, still open on that one. I would suppose, I'd have to look at the zoning in that area. I think it's all about the same, maybe a couple different zone districts. So, so to your point, yes, if there was a specific mixed-use parcel and it didn't fit in the zone district as is, it would, it would require a rezone. Just, just strictly speaking, kind of black and white, there's a lot more gray area in between there, but yes.
This time, I actually didn't put the reusing what's already there. I know that that was something I had thought about earlier and I think is important in the other areas. When I think about the west gateway to Manitou, I'm not sure that for me, that would be a, right now, a major priority. I'm thinking, for example, I would, I would be reluctant if that ended up trumping other ways to make the entry into Manitou and saying, "This is really Manitou," and making a statement, have that trump, trump that. For example, the old bottling plant, it's a historic building. I'm a historian. Historians are notorious for not loving everything about history. I don't really feel that we have to preserve everything about history. I could imagine that property, using that building in an interesting way, but I also could imagine doing away with that building and doing something much more interesting for a gateway to the city. Similarly, there's the house with the apartment building in the back is a large piece of property. I don't really have strong feelings. I'm not attached to the notion that that should be developed, redeveloped. I actually, so when I think about the limited number of properties in the west end, I would actually encourage us more to be thinking about something, again, that you all, my colleagues here have been saying, that when you come into Manitou, you have a sense that you're in Manitou and whatnot. And if it, if it meant reusing some of the buildings there, I think that's fine, but I just don't, I, at this point, I'm not seeing that as a priority for the west gateway.
Great. And actually, Counselor Wolf, I'm looking at the zoning map now and we do have a, I'd say about half of it. No, that's not actually accurate. Hillside Low Density Residential, kind of right at the gateway and some open space and then there's commercial and general residential. And I believe the commercial zone district does allow residential mixed into the building. So there aren't any specifically mixed-use zone districts in Manitou Springs, so that's another, you know, it, right now, almost anything's pretty much on the table if we feel there needs to be a mixed-use zone district, but, so I hope that answers your question a little bit more, that it looks to me that a, a lot of the properties that would serve more that mixed-use purpose are in the commercial district in which it's allowed to have that mix of uses, so. Great.
I believe Mr. Bremner has a question.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of echo what Tip was saying. I think maybe the adaptive use of existing buildings, which is the one that got 10 votes, I didn't vote for it. In fact, I'm in general contrarian point of view on that. I, I, I look upon the west end as, as being ready for raising some of those buildings, those, that old apartment building that Tip mentioned, the Soda Springs bottle, or the bottling plant. It's, it needs a lot, lot of work in there, so I'd be willing to, you know, allow a lot of leeway out there. Thanks.
Great. Anyone else have any thoughts on the west end?
Yeah, I think, you know, and, and this is, you know, I bring it up every now and then, it's maybe not appropriate for design guidelines, but I just look at what happened on the east end, the urban hardscape, and I, I think somehow with our design guidelines, we have to have as an element the, the vegetation, you know. I'd hate to see the west end turn into what the east end did and now we're trying, we're struggling to try to make it better and get more vegetation, get more trees, get more plants. And it seems to me that's part of design guidelines. You know, just looking at the hotel that is popping up, it's, it's all cement, parking. We, we have to figure that out and that seems to me should be part of any kind of design guidance we give people.
Great. So, so the streetscape and the, the landscape, the tree canopy, all very important. Okay. Yes?
I, I'm not sure. I thought that with all the construction already going on, on west end of Manitou Ave, it was, it's my understanding and maybe I'm mistaken, that we are, we're, I don't know if I should say stuck because a lot of the community isn't happy about it, but that there's going to be a widened sidewalk so that bicycles and e-bikes and wheelchairs and people and everybody will fit on the sidewalk. And that, that's already under construction. If that's the case, why are we voting if the sidewalk should be wide? Isn't it, isn't that, aren't we already committed to that or stuck with that, however you want to say it?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I actually didn't know about that project, so thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Oh, it's a ton of construction. You should try to walk through it, it's impossible. It's terrible. So, yeah, that's where I was confused, like if we're already stuck with, I thought, you know, it's already been decided that you have to have a certain number of light poles even though the community didn't want it because that's how Colorado Springs does it, they were told at the meeting. And you have to have the wide sidewalks because da-da-da-da, that's how we're doing it. So I don't know why we're voting on those things if it's, you know, faux accompli. I just needed a little clarification. Who knows? Christine would know.
I'll try my best. So some aspects of what's happening on the west end are predetermined. You're absolutely right. The maps project, we have in our long-term plan, Creek Walk, we'll go through there and there are design standards associated with that. Taking that out, taking that aside, when we look at the individual parcels and how they're developed and the continuity of those, that's what we're really hoping to get at because you're absolutely right in some ways. Roy, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but the design, the designs are complete and construction is underway and there's a number of items that are already underway and City Council previously approved those. So we don't have, for this particular aspect of the zoning code, we don't have tremendous flexibility there.
You know, I think, I just want to say that I think that Mayor Protem Nancy Fortune nailed it. I want to know that I'm in Manitou regardless of where I come from, the west end, the east end, if I'm getting off Columbia and going on El Paso Boulevard, I want to know that I have left Colorado Springs. I was on my morning hike in the Garden of the Gods and I was up at the Trading Post and I saw, you know, license plates from Ohio and Iowa and Texas and Kansas and I saw very few Colorado plates this morning. And so if we want to be that unique destination, I, I'm really a fan, as everyone knows, no secret, of preserving as many of us, of our historic landmarks and the things that make Manitou unique. But that doesn't mean we can't incorporate design around those. And again, if they, you know, are found to be unsound and not worth saving, I'm, I'm, I'm not a martyr. But I think that we have this unique opportunity to take the jewel that we have and decide how we want to enhance that and not detract from it. So, because I don't go to Colorado Springs to go to a restaurant, there's restaurants here in town. If I go to Colorado Springs, normally it's to see something that isn't here and it's, typically that's a historic thing for me. So to even go out of my, out of my town, I have to be attracted to that. And so we have to be very careful if we're going to just become another blueprint of any other town, why would anyone go out of their way to come here? So I think that's really, really front of mind for me. Thanks.
Great, yes.
I, I also like the idea of you enter Manitou, it feels like you're in Manitou, but I do also like the idea of individual neighborhoods having a little different feel, like in the URA with the neon signs. I think those neon signs are fabulous. I do not want neon signs on the west end. So I think that I, I do like the idea when we talk about, you know, sort of that historic focus, but if there's not already that Victorian historic focus, I don't want to require it in an area where it currently isn't necessarily. I think it would be weird to do that all of a sudden in the middle of the URA next to the LeFond, like would be a little odd. So I guess that's part of, I don't want to lose that energy either.
Great, yes.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that. I think the term that comes to mind is authentic and building Victorian places where there currently aren't Victorian's pace, places would feel a little, you know, Disneylandish. So when I, when I look at all the pictures, I'm like, "Oh, those are all nice," you know? But I won't really know what I want there until I actually, you know, something is present, concretely presented. I just know that I don't want cookie cutter and, and I don't want just, yeah, cookie cutter and what everybody else has. It's got to be unique to Manitou. So it's, it's hard for me to fill these out because, yeah, "Oh, that looks cool, that looks cool," but, you know, so being authentic to me is important.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other thoughts on this one? Okay, I think we'll move on to the next one. Same exercise, so now we're looking at El Paso Boulevard and Becker's Lane. And again, you're looking at different elements within this, so realizing that there's not a whole lot of commercial or kind of multifamily space, there's the one about covered sidewalks and street plantings. It's more of an idea, you know, for, for any commercial space that could come in, kind of a look, a feel versus your adaptive reuse, your duplexes in town homes, one-story residential development, which Becker's Lane primarily is currently. You know, varied building heights, looking at a variety of heights, and then the residential streetscape, which we've talked about quite a bit up in that area. Now, on this one, we are seeing different results from previous meetings, so I'm curious to hear the conversation. Okay. All right, so residential streetscape has been at the top of the list on, on every time we've kind of talked about this area, so I think that's becoming kind of a, a given to focus on. One-story residential development, we, we all know a lot of that area is currently one-story residential. Duplex in town home development seems to be kind of midway up there. So I'd like to hear some thoughts on, on this area and, you know, thinking about as redevelopment happens, you know, we all know that it's inevitable at, at some point, you never know what might happen to a, a home, you know, someone may buy a home and want to add on to it or, you know, want to, you know, maybe it doesn't serve their purpose and they want to build a new home on the site. So, you know, thinking through that and, and in that residential area. And then there's the commercial, kind of commercial area, which seems to be pretty well-built, but I'm sure there's some, could be some redevelopment potential in that area, so. Yeah, fire could, could cause some, you know, redevelopment opportunities. So, so even in an area that's established like this, that, you know, we all, we all feel like it's, you know, one way or another, we just need to think about what comes, what could come in if, if, you know, something did happen or a building was, was removed or lost. So just, you know, trying to think about that character. And I did drive up there and saw the town homes that I've been hearing about today, so I finally have a, a sense of that area a little bit better. Yes.
I think we should also have a guideline that makes it clear that the front door has to be facing what you've presented to Planning Commission. I could be mistaken, but I think that was one of many problems with the Becker's Lane development.
Okay.
Is that supposedly they got approved and then they turned around and had like all of the HVAC and all the junk facing the street and that wasn't anticipated, but it also wasn't contrary to our code because it wasn't required in our code, so I'd like to see something about that.
And that's another element in that area. You know, a lot of the buildings are kind of set back about the same distance, you know, and that can be attributed to the streetscape, to the character, you know, do you, do you want buildings closer or further back or do we want to be kind of consistent with, with that existing step, setback? So any, any thoughts on any of this or any of that?
Yeah, I, I think the Becker's Lane is a really instructive example of where things got messed up or didn't work. And we, we pretty much have two little streets that are like bungalows. One is there on Becker, Becker's, the other is along El Paso Boulevard in the 400 block. And several years ago, there was a, someone wanted to put a townhouse project into that bungalow area on El Paso. And what they did is very, you know, it's modern, but it's, it fits really well. If, you know, I'd recommend you go and look at it and I don't know how we got there other than I remember the public hearing and I, I remember someone on City Council said, "Oh, please, no more stucco." And they came up with something that, that looks like it could have been designed at the time the other stuff was designed, whereas on Becker's, we, you know, we had a zoning code that said you could go 30 feet, they want 30 feet and very little compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood. And that's the thing that answering these polls, I don't quite know how to articulate that, but that's the kind of thing, we need to figure out how to, how to keep that or how to, how to have a success the next time.
Awesome, yeah. That, part of these polls, I think, spurs these conversations and, and the things that we're missing are almost as important as the things that we've presented, you know, getting the, flushing out the, the details. So that's, that's great and very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, Christine wants to say something.
I just want to let you know, there's been a couple of emails that have come in that have noticed our mics aren't quite right when someone else's mic is on, so just a reminder... So just a reminder, when we're not speaking, to turn off your mic. A little housekeeping.
I was gonna, I just, I just got three texts that people can't hear us, so thank you for that. I think the El Paso Becker's Lane area is interesting because I think the needs of Becker's Lane are perhaps a little different than maybe El Paso. Maybe not. I know that's a certain area where we're, that, that certainly worried about future traffic issues. But as long as we're looking at the Becker's Lane Townhomes as an example, I know that we're focusing on one aspect tonight. For from a climate, climate action and sustainability and environmental sustain, that's also a really great property to look at. Because those of us that were, were appalled at the, at the design, we're looking at the runoff. Because behind that building is, is runoff that goes right into Fountain Creek. Typically, when you have a townhome that has a garage facing the street and an entrance, typically some kind of backyard or some kind of, of mitigation effect is in your backyard. And so that didn't happen. So what happened with these townhomes is a heat island effect and there's rocks back there. And so the runoff is going to go right into the creek. And so we, so I just want to just bring that up as a good topic that the, all of these need to be integrated. We need to look at environmental concerns and all of these things. So we don't allow that kind of thing to happen. Where we're looking at some pretty ruinous habitat issues with that that will be interesting to watch over time.
Any other comments on, on this topic, on Becker's Lane? Guess we could push on then.
Great. All right, the urban renewal area. Same type of questions. So varied building height, adaptive reuse is a very strong possibility in this area. I don't know if it's desired, but it is, there are a lot of buildings for adaptive reuse. Parking, so in this area, we've included parking for, you know, do we want to have parking right on the, on the front of the building, on the street side? Or do we want it to try to be to the side to try to kind of have a little bit more activated pedestrian spaces? Activate the, the, we say alleyways in there. The picture is alleyways, but just looking at those in-between spaces or the rear spaces, activating those. Outdoor dining with detached sidewalks, mid-century modern motels. There's a, a lot of the motels in the urban renewal area. And a lot of hotels across the country are either converting or taking that mid-century modern and kind of updating to, or mid-century updating to a mid-century modern. So just some thoughts that we threw out to, to get the conversation going.
We're continuing to get messages that the YouTube sound isn't coming through. So we're trying to figure out that.
Okay, I just remind folks that you really need to be pretty close to the microphone, three inches or so. That helps.
So I'm a little bit confused about mid-century, does that mean like 1950s? 1950s?
Yes. Yeah, looking in the, the, they're, they're typically the motels out there that are, you know, single-story, the motel, the motor inn. And architecturally speaking, not, you know, they're kind of timeless. You know, they don't really have, a lot of times they don't have a lot of, a lot of features that really identify the time. So they, they can kind of run for a long time. And what a lot of people are doing is just adding rustic or modern, you know, the, kind of the new architectural styles or that rustic, modern farmhouse. They're starting to just kind of add some elements of that to bring it a little bit more current, so.
Okay, so not 60s, just 50s?
40s to 60s, we'll say.
Question on, on the response that you can give others, other please describe. I clicked on that and I don't get a dialogue box or anything. So is this, is this just something I state verbally or?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, and I would defer to URA folks who, who know more about this. But there's several significant old properties there that could, the buildings could either be torn down or perhaps they could be, be repurposed. But I, I think the URA has had any number of problems in trying to contact those land, those property owners and getting them engaged and involved. So to me, that's probably the most significant factor that we have out. And I think primarily these are out-of-town landlords or property owners. So I mentioned that I think that's a huge obstacle in the URA. Yeah, Ellen, you know more about that and Nancy, so I would like to hear your comments on that.
That, that's certainly true. But I look at this as when there's something new being built or renovated that the design standards would apply. So we can't, you know, so we, you can't force a landlord to give up the building. I, I would look to Natalie and Ellen too, since Natalie was on URA longer than I was.
Right, okay, I, I understand that. And I just, I was talking about, about this problem with somebody. He says, well, a couple of people need to die. And it's because they're, you know, they're elderly. I mean, he didn't wish many, any harm. But he said, really, they're, you know, these properties are not going to change hands until, you know, the, the current owner leaves them off to somebody else in the estate. So we're sort of stuck.
One thing that we can build into the code is incentives to turn those over or to redevelop them. Again, that would require reaching out to those property owners and, and describing what incentives would be available to, to help them, you know, put investment into their property. But, but that's, that's one way I could think of, of tackling that.
Which the URA has actually done, and it's La Fawn, right? That they've actually, the URA helped subsidize the painting. And if you've not gone by, it's new owners there. And it just looks a whole heck of a lot better. I mean, it's, it still needs work, but it's way better than it was. So that's exciting.
So I, this was not my idea, but I think it's a great idea. In fact, it may have been yours, Jen. We have this beautiful creek and we go through the URA and we have all these buildings in front of it. So I really wasn't sure how to answer the, for example, activated alleyways. But it would be so wonderful in future development to really emphasize the creek and, and, and all that it has to offer. And again, I, you know, I, I lived on the west side for decades before moving to Manitou. And a, a lot of my friends were of the mindset that you're not really in Manitou until you cross under 24 and you're kind of right around the swimming pool and then you know you're in Manitou. Because the URA is, while it's a, it's a, an amazing opportunity, I, for me, to me, it's the gateway that needs the most attention and, and, and creative work. But the creek, if we could emphasize the creek, would be fantastic.
Great. Any other thoughts in the URA? I want to talk about the varied building heights, but I'm holding back because we do have the question on building heights and I really want to get into it during that one. So why don't we go on to the next one? East Manitou Avenue. So again, this is the area right near the urban renewal area, just on the west, west of 24 and east of downtown. All right, so it looks like we're getting that varied building height again. So I'm curious about that one. The small-scale mixed-use, vertical mixed-use, the wide sidewalks with restaurant space. So one question I have of, of you all is, do you see this area kind of as an extension of downtown? Or its own area, it's an extension of the URA? Something kind of in-between the two? I, I haven't really gotten my, my arms around this area, to be, to be perfectly honest, what, what its identity is. So I'm really looking to you all to kind of tell me what, what you feel this area. Because you, you kind of come under, like we said, you come under 24 and there's some wonderful aspects and they're, you know, right in that area. And then you're in downtown. So I, I just don't know where you want to see that go with development. Yes?
I do think you're right in that people are confused in that area. So we'll often get people that will stop at the Manitou Arts Center right here and say, oh, did we miss the downtown? And they're just a block away, right? And so I think there's that expanse where people are confused and we're not giving them much direction as far as that goes. But I think properties like the Briarhurst and whatnot that are set back make it difficult to kind of take ownership of that space. Not that the Briarhurst is a bad, you know, business or anything. It's just complex in terms of communicating as a driver, what's happening.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think if, if you look on the, the north side, we have this big campground and lots of trees, lots of vegetation. And we have the Briarhurst with the big, lots of vegetation along the creek. And, and, you know, to echo what Counselor, no, what Judith said, Counselor Chandler said, you know, the, the creek is an asset that we're just squandering. There's so much we could do if we used the creek and make it a, a setting rather than a nuisance where people, you know, throw their garbage or camp illegally. And, but, but the whole, that whole stretch is, is, it's pretty unique. And you can go back and look at historic pictures, like the Pancake House was a drive-in in the 50s. It has a lot of history. The, then, you know, the Happy Cats Haven Building, that's a great example of adaptive reuse. That was a brutal, ugly box that they really repurposed. And, and then you look at, you know, one of the major developments in that area that is different from other parts of Manitou, but, but is very appropriate in that area is Taos Village. You know, it's all stucco, but it fit, it, it really is designed well. And, and it's another element that, I don't know, maybe there's a way to do more stuff like that. That's, but, but anyway, I think that there's just a lot of challenges. Just one side is very urban and the other side is very historic, more rural.
Great, that was very helpful, thank you.
I think it's interesting that back when we were looking at signage, cohesive signage program throughout the city, that that neighborhood was, was listed as opportunity land. Because it doesn't have a, as much of a singular identity as many of the other areas that you've got here have. And it's really kind of open for some identity. But I, I can't agree more about the creek access. And that area probably more than any other is the easiest to take advantage, where it's the best, the, should be top priority. But I also know that, you know, we've got, that's where the first elements of the creek walk are going in. So it's just a really important place and could be really cool if it were developed. And the design guidelines were appropriate for it, so. But I don't know what those are, so.
I would like to pose a question about the creeks. Something in Colorado Springs and other communities, they've put in place something called complete creeks. And it's a concept that takes into account stormwater, wildlife, various modes of transportation. And I wondered if any of you are familiar with it? Would you be interested in learning a little bit more about that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, I'll, I'll gather some information that might be interesting for you guys to learn more about and react to as well. There's some aspects of it that are super cool. Some of it may be a little too hardscaped for this community, but those are things that are easily modified and adjusted, so, thanks.
Tip?
I guess that I also wonder whether we should, need to be having a conversation about what we imagine these four neighborhoods looking like. I agree with Natalie, whose last name I can't remember, Johnson, that one of the things that's distinctive and valuable about Manitou is we have many, many different neighborhoods. The Bungalow Neighborhood, Aggett Hill, they have very different characters and personalities. And I think that's a real bonus. One of the things that's difficult here is that of the four areas that are under construct, conversation, I would argue that Becker's Lane is the only one that has an identity. I mean, after all, one to two of there is we used to call No Man's Land. And that was only a couple of years ago. And the west end has already been alluded to, doesn't really have any sent, integrity as a neighborhood. And so part of the difficulty is talking more abstractly about these neighborhoods. Like, how do we determine authenticity when I don't think there's an authentic personality to some of these neighborhoods? Because I think that is important, but I don't even think we're there. So part of the conversation that may not yet have taken place is what would we imagine? What would we like, for example, the previous No Man's Land to look like? What kind of buildings? Like, I think Happy, Happy Cats or Haven is fantastic. There are a number of, not abandoned, but closed buildings right adjacent to it. What kinds of things would we imagine for this community? And then we would have a sense of what they should look like. Do you know what I mean? But it's hard to think, so I could imagine a number of those buildings would be great for this community if they could be mixed-use with residences on top. And on the first floor, amenities for this community, like green grocers, for example, or, or florists, or butcher, butchers. I mean, there are so many things that we could, that would be really attractive for this community to have. But if we don't talk about that, then it's hard to know how we would, how would we do an imprint on a neighborhood to give it an authentic character that is distinctive from other ones? Do you, do you know what I, what I mean?
Absolutely, very well said. So I, I would put that to all of you. What, you know, are there, are there buildings that are either in town or around here or other, other areas you've been to that you feel you could imagine in any of these four areas?
That's why I couldn't take the survey because of what Tip just said. I tried to. I mean, I looked at it, I went in a few times. I was like, I can't answer this. Because there's no identity for this neighborhood already. So you, we're, we're on stage three, but we haven't done chapter one yet. And we're about to do chapter two and three and four. But if we don't do chapter one, I'm not sure this will be too useful. Because there is no identity for some of those areas. Or if there is a particular identity we'd like to see, we should discuss it before choosing which picture is prettier. And the other part of that that occurs to me, and I'm not a specialist in this whatsoever, but it seems to me that we should also get some input before we make those decisions about feasibility. Because I can't imagine there are that many butchers who want to move to Manitou and who can afford to, to make a living in this city. So why should we focus on, you know, butchers and florists if the reality is that they're not going to move here? I was all excited when I heard that Natural Grocers was supposedly being solicited by some of the URA people. And then they were like, we don't, we're not going to make money here, not, this isn't a good place. So we need to know what's a So we need to know what's appropriate or what's, you know, commercially feasible. And then we need to know what we want before we choose if we want an adaptive reuse of a building or an activated alleyway. I mean, geez, how am I supposed to decide that when we haven't decided what we want the neighborhood to look like yet? So I very much agree with Tip.
Great, yeah. And this exercise was supposed to try to help us get there, to try to get some pictures out there and some thoughts to say, you know, are we looking at residential buildings, commercial buildings, you know, varied heights? So, yeah, the, I think, I think we're all on the, we're actually all on the same page trying to get that vision out there. So, any other thoughts on, yes?
So are we going to talk about what we want the neighborhood to look like? Or are we going to, I don't get it. I'm sorry, I didn't understand your response. Is that something we should do? I think we should.
Julie, Steve Remner also had his hand up there. So if we could let Steve follow his comment, may follow on, and then we could come back to you.
I'm, I was thinking in terms of the south side of Manitou Avenue along that eastern corridor. There's a lot of buildings in there that are just abandoned or like the 7-Eleven that they abandoned and nobody decided to put anything in there. I don't know what would be appropriate there. But I would think it'd be a great business location for somebody, whether it's a baker or, I don't really want a butcher because I'm a vegetarian. But something there would be appropriate because there's parking, everything. So I don't understand why that old 7-Eleven building is still vacant as well as the other buildings along there.
Okay, maybe back to Julie, then?
No, I'm done.
You're done, okay. Christine? Or Judith?
I just, I just think this area, I think this area, can you hear me? Is the most challenging. I think it has, it has the one personality where we have the RV Park, we have the Green Willow, we have the Chamber, we have Briarhurst. That really has its own established personality. It's the other side of the street that really is the question mark. I actually had my office there, right by the abandoned 7-Eleven. There's that warehouse, a really unsightly warehouse. There's the abandoned 7-Eleven. And then there's the Pancake House. And there's several businesses. And then there's the ski chair, you know. And then there's a little bit farther into town, then you have an auto repair. So there's a little bit of everything. So I think that's the area in this, in this zone that really needs some, a deep dive into what we want it to look like. Because I do, I do see, you asked a question, is this, I would love to see it as, while I am getting closer to the historic district of downtown Manitou, I'm getting into the heart of Manitou. Each, you know, the closer I get into town, the more I feel that way. And this area kind of interrupts that for me. So I think that's going to be a real interesting challenge for us.
I think this is a really great conversation. We were really hoping to have a conversation that touches both sides of this coin, if you will, right? So there's an economic development aspect to it. Good planning promotes good economic development. It's hard to have good economic development if you don't have good planning. We can have any type of business or residential structure in a look, right? So we can talk about what we want to look like, what that feel is. So it could, you know, it could be a florist. It could be a gluten-free baker. It could be any of those things, but it looks the way we want it to look. The economic development side of it, Counselor Wolf, is super important. I know that's something that I'm challenged with from the, from staff's side when there are proposals or folks who express interest in going into different areas of town. You know, my first question is always, how does this fit into the big picture? Do we have a big picture? We don't always have a big picture. And that's an area in particular where we, it's not necessarily clear what we're trying to do. So I think this is a great place to start. And I would encourage this larger group to continue having a conversation about economic development. There are so many tools that could be used in addition to design standards and guidelines, right? There's a lot in terms of, in the harshest all the way, of course, is using eminent domain. Because you have an area where you want it to be developed or retained in a certain way. And so you use those tools to protect those areas or grow those areas how you want. And of course, there's more gentle prodding that could be done or pushing along. So that was a great question. Because I think it helped push us in the right direction where we want to go.
I just got another text from a resident that they can't hear us.
Maybe we should take a short break and try to work the technical problems. Denise?
Yeah, I don't know how to work them right now. I'm sorry, but we are, it's one of the challenges that we have with these hybrid meetings as we go forward in the streaming. I do have an email out, but I do not have a response at this point. So I'm not sure I can fix this right at this moment. I apologize.
No, and I sent a help email out too and haven't gotten an answer back either, so.
It should be being taped. Do you have it being taped? It's on Zoom, is it on a Zoom or just a? Okay, it should be being taped, but I can verify that.
I think just reminding, because I notice people don't get really close to their microphone. I know Denise keeps asking them to. But I think that might help if people get really close, direct on the mic.
Okay, let's see. Ellen, let's go with you and then we'll go to Julie, okay?
Yeah, the question was asked, what do we want there? And I'll just throw out what I want. My test, when I look at a commercial area is, will I go there? Is there something I need there, something I want? I've lived within a two-minute walk of the URA for 39 years. And there's one thing I'll walk down there for after all this time. And I go to other places. I go to friends' houses in Denver who live in an old neighborhood like our neighborhoods. And they can walk down and there's stuff. If you live in Aggett Hill, you can walk down and there's 16 different menu, you know, different restaurants. There's different shops to go to. And I'd like to see some of that imagination go both to the URA and to that East Manitou area. It's mostly on the south side and there's not that much stuff. There are some historic buildings, like the Eagle Motel has some historic Midland Railroad buildings that we don't really want to probably trash. But, you know, it's just a real challenge. And the thing that I always imagined was going to happen with the URA that didn't was that we would really truly have some mixed-use, commercial on the ground floor, residential in back and above, possibly go a little bit higher and have some interesting attainable housing there. None of that's happened. And that's, again, people own the property and we can only beg and coerce. But if we made it more palatable, maybe they would. But that's, that's my vision. I want to be able to go down there and do something. Now, if I want to do something, I mostly walk down to the historic district.
Oh, I just wanted to add that we may also want to get some guidance from the master plan, which set out a list of local services that would be helpful to seniors or people without cars. I don't know how realistic it is to think that the health department wants to open up any little local places here when they figure you could just, you know, hop a bus and get downtown to Cota Springs. But we may want to look at some of the services that were recommended to see if any of those uses would be compatible or appropriate for the east end.
One of the things that we've talked about, we've brought up some of the buildings that we think highly about. The Cat Haven is one, the Taos Apartments is another one. I think someone mentioned the Colorado Lodge as well. One of the things that's interesting about all three of them is that they've all been made into stucco buildings. And they all have a feeling of the West. And Colorado Springs now doesn't have that feeling of the West anymore. But Manitou still does. And as our colleagues have been talking about, in coming to Manitou, approaching the downtown, it seems to me to accentuate the Western nature of Manitou is really important. And so if we had a combination of stucco and Western architecture, for example, some of what you see in Woodland Park, if you had some kind of combination of that, that would immediately be giving an imprint of what Manitou is. That would be one of the things I would start out for those two areas. And I would also echo what Alan was saying about having residences on the top and in the back. And then having, and then promoting ground-level, street-front, interesting businesses. And contrary to what Counselor Wolf said, there would be people like butchers or grocers, or, I mean, like greengrocer, if you started to build upon one another. The problem is right now, nobody's going to go and say, oh, I want to go open a florist shop there. But what we've seen, again and again, I saw it oftentimes in places like Berkeley back in the ancient days in California. But what we see is that when there's some kind of, there's a coordinated sense of what the personality of the neighborhood is and clear guidelines, then groups of people go and say, wouldn't it be great to have these five businesses in proximity? Because they're going to feed off of each other with the Alans walking down or people from Old Colorado City driving there because it's convenient and they don't want to go to Eastern Colorado Springs to get whatever. So I actually think that with, having some kind of sense of what the personality, what that kind of more authentic sense, if I can use your word there, and say, this is Manitou, it has to do with West. It's like this older Western architecture style or stucco of the Southwest. And that we want to have the kinds of buildings that are two stories, maybe occasionally three stories with the combination. Then I think that, and then having, and we wouldn't forget not only the Creekside, but have the greenscape for environmental reasons and whatnot. I think it would be super attractive. And there would be people who then would say, I'm not going to be the one person homesteading in one of three abandoned buildings. Who's going to do that? But if people are starting to think collectively about what this is going to be, then I think that we would have a good chance of fanning that and incentivizing that kind of personality.
Well said, as usual.
Julie?
So would that require, Tip, so what you're talking, I'll kiss it. What you're talking about is that, I guess that would be a taking? So that you, the city purchases like three contiguous abandoned buildings? So then we have this whole block to deal with and to develop. So are you suggesting, since we've been told that the owners don't want to sell, are you suggesting that we should do a taking?
That wasn't what I was thinking. Owners don't want to sell, but when the price is right? Who was it that you said everything is for sale? The thing is that values are increasing in this area exponentially. And so there's going to be a huge incentive for people who previously didn't want to sell to start thinking about selling. I just, to me, I don't think that it requires the city to either take over or buy. I think that you can let the market do it. But you make it that it's worth the investors' while to invest and know that they're going to be able to get a good return on what their investment is.
This is the area of town where I had my business pre-COVID, before my COVID shut my business down. And I had a beautiful office right by Happy Cats. Couple things. First of all, I paid twice as much in rent for what I rented that I could have rented on the west side. So I think we really have to look at how do we attract businesses into this area because the rents are high. I was lucky because I had a business where I just saw one client at a time. So I had two parking spaces, one for my car vehicle and one for my client. Parking is a huge issue there for, you know, I had an office in a shared office space with many people and we had a parking lot. And quite often, you know, my client couldn't park. And so, and I was right across the street from the Green Willow. And so we just have to take those into consideration. It's like, it'd be great to have a hardware store and a florist and a butcher, whatever it is we want. But we have to be mindful that, you know, it's hard to afford to be here. And again, parking is a premium. And we have to stop blacktopping everything. Like, my office was in a stucco building, but everything's blacktopped. So it was just that heat island effect then with no trees. So again, the bit, we have to look at the big picture and do some environmental impact statements on, you know, research on these areas before we start doing the same thing over and over again, that cookie cutter thing. Thanks.
Any other comments on this topic? Guess not. We could, I would suggest we take a 10-minute break and come back. Anybody object to that? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. Well, I think the short story is we are continuing to have technical difficulties. The people at home can't hear us, they can see us, so we have little choice but to push on right now. I think Denise is trying to work the problem. But if we could get back on schedule here?
Absolutely. As Councillor Wolf said, I'm going to kiss the microphone. Okay, so these next two slides are talking about building height in all four of these areas, and I don't want to look at just building height, I want to take everything we've been talking about, and pull that together, and think about the, I mean, you guys have been bringing up some really great points, and the whole idea of tonight was to get the look and feel of these areas, so what, give them an identity, so to speak. So while we're talking through the building height kind of conversation, I want to think through not just building height, but what does it look and feel like? Is it, is it three straight stories right up against the street? Is it, you know, two stories up and you have to step back? Is it, you know, is it set back from the road? What's that look and feel? And I think we were really getting to the essence of that on the East Manitou discussion that we just had, kind of starting to talk about what that looks and feels like. I mean, you can even throw in architectural ideas if you want to, but I just, I want to really start to paint that picture of these four areas through the last little piece of this conversation. And if I had a big pad of paper or whiteboard, I'd draw what you guys are talking about so that we can kind of get there. But what we will do is start to draw these into SketchUp models, and bring those back, and say, does this feel right for this area based on what we've talked about? So go ahead with the building height. Now, we did break this into two different questions. One is for commercial development, and one is for residential development. We had it all as one originally, and then we got some feedback in our Citizens and Advisory Committee that some people might feel that residential needs to have a different height than commercial, so we broke it out, and I just am curious to see if we see a difference with this group or not. So this is specific to commercial building height in all four of the areas we've been talking about. And they may be the same, I don't know, I just want to, we kind of broke it out to see if they are different or same. Yes, and the maximum height is four stories. I believe the current code is thirty, is three stories, or thirty, yeah, depending on, yeah. And we can extrapolate from this a dimension, we don't have to say three-story and four-story, we can, you know, from this conversation, we can say 35 feet, 42 feet, you know, we can kind of talk through what that height looks like, and what additional features can be added. You know, a lot of times you have your roof pitch, and maybe your chimney, or a steeple, or architectural elements exceed that height limit, and we can talk about those projections as we go down the line. I don't want to think about those details tonight particularly, but. All right. Looks like most votes are in, and we're kind of hovering in the almost three stories for West Manitou, the URA, and East Manitou, and solidly at two for El Paso and Becker's Lane. Give like one more second here, and then I think we'll go to the residential and do the same thing, and then we can open to the conversation. So, yeah, go ahead and go to the next slide. And we can toggle back and forth between these if we need to. So here, same areas, residential height, strictly residential, and that can be town homes, single family, you know, you name it, any residential building. So I will say, we're noticing a trend here that was similar to the last time we did this exercise, that there's not a huge difference between residential and commercial. You'll see El Paso, Becker's Lane has stayed at two, the urban rural area has bumped up to three rather than 2.9, East Manitou 2.9, west has dropped a little for the residential, but still we're in that two and a half. I think the last slide, we were closer to three. So now I'd like to open to discussion, and again, tell me why you think certain heights, and what other type of stipulations you think should be placed in there. Do you think there's any reason or any situation that would call for something like the four-story? I know nobody's really picking the choice to go further closer to the four-story, so I want to, I want to hear that, and I want you to kind of paint the picture for me of what you're envisioning when you're seeing two-story, three-story, what that looks like? Yes?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. I think it's, we're asking a weird question when we talk about commercial in the Becker's El Paso Boulevard area. Right now, there are three properties zoned commercial, one of them is actually being used in a residential framework. Over the past 20 years, three other properties that had been zoned commercial are now residential. That seems to be the trend and the vibe in that area, so working a lot about developing the commercial, I think if anything, the other places are going to either stay as-is or trend towards that. So it's just something to keep in mind, that it's kind of weird when I hear that thing about commercial on Becker's and El Paso Boulevard.
Good, yeah, good to know. I did know there was not a whole lot of commercial, and it's mostly on El Paso, so it's good to know that it's trending towards residential. I think we're still looking at the same forms, shapes, architectural features, whether it's residential or commercial, personally, so, but I appreciate that comment. Any other thoughts? I want to really get into these areas, yeah.
I'm interested in a variety of heights, but I do just want us to track the view shed as we drive in, there's some nice points where you see the peak, and it would just be a shame to block that with the development.
So I also want us to, so the view shed is really important, also the creek, if we're going to work on emphasizing the creek as a real jewel of our town, I think we need to look at building heights there, but I also think we need to look at But I also think we need to look at light pollution. So, and I'll use the hotel, the Holiday Inn. From the Fields Park side at night, I walk up there a lot. So you can see the lights, right, from the hotel through the tree... Well, they, they took down all the trees, but the trees that used to be there. So you, so there's a lot of light pollution. And the, the trees that were taken down on Becker's Lane, if you're on the baseball side of that, you can see it, the light pollution through there too. We have to be really mindful of, and I'm gonna, you know, throw in the Becker's Lane townhomes too, is that, you know, those typical one and two-story houses, we now have the three-story. And we're, I do live on Becker's Lane, so we're actually going to be putting blackout curtains because at night we can see that light coming in our windows. So I think that we have to be mindful from an environmental standpoint what the lighting effect is going to be.
Denise?
Yeah, I just want to, one of the things we've asked them to look at is the dark skies ordinance. So they're going to be put in that part of the zoning and for you to, to look at of what that entails for both residential and commercial and an entire block skies ordinance as we move forward.
Other comments? Yeah, I guess we can push on.
Okay. I do want to know, our, I'm going to use a couple of townhomes as an example, and I'm not judging either one, but just, I think they're both really good examples. Christine, you might have to help me with the name. But the one that, that Counsel, Counselor Chandler was just talking about, the townhomes on Becker's Lane that are very monolithic, so that's three stories. And then around the corner on El Paso, coming towards town, there's another set of townhomes that are more adobe-style. And they're also three stories, but they're stepped back. So the first two stories go up, and then it steps back for that third story. And there's just some different architectural features. So just looking at those two examples, you know, they're both three-story. They have very different feeling. So is there one that we feel like fits in Manitou Springs more than another or in different areas? I mean, downtown, if you look, most of the buildings are more that, you know, straight, vertical rather than the step-back. And I think there's other areas where it's, especially in the more residential areas, where you have more of that articulation and facade modulation. So are we concerned about that as well? I just want to kind of throw that out there. Yes?
My, my impression is that if the building is set way back from, further back from the street, then it doesn't look as overwhelming and overpowering. Whereas when we have just the minimum setbacks, then that three-story height looks bad when the rest of the street doesn't look like that. So I would hope that if there are guidelines that authorize three-story properties, it goes by the feet, right? It doesn't go by the stories, but whatever, that we'd be looking at accommodating that impact by increasing the setback from the front. I would think that would make it less offensive.
Yeah, perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Any other thoughts on that?
I actually...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, when I drive into Santa Fe, you don't even know it's there. It's a small-scale city, and I think that that's cool. And I think Manitou is a small scale. It's a small city, and it's small in scale. And I just think we should honor that. And I can see where there should be some design elements that might be incorporated to give a little bit more flexibility in that regard. But for the most part, I just think that smaller scale fits our, our entire identity better. Again, you know, there are exceptions, but, you know, so steeples obviously, well, I think obviously. There are some other, you know, just pure architectural things that, you know, the facade downtown with the western thing, that's, where it's just the facade and also the step-back thing. I mean, so there, there are things you can do, but again, small scale.
I just want to echo that. I actually was one of the people, I picked for all of them two stories. I actually just think that's in keeping with the character of Manitou. And I think it's especially important when it comes to the site, what is expression? Site guideline, sight lines, side, side views. For example, the, can you imagine with the, like, the west end, if people build and hug Manitou Avenue, which I think might be fine, but if they were three stories, you would lose the whole sense of going up to the path. And I think that would be such a, so I don't, I, I'm in disagreement with the, with my comrades here in some way about that. I would say two stories across the way. I think it's in keeping with the scale of Manitou and what kind of small, small-scale community, but especially for the, the western one. I could see some three stories on the south side of the east part because you don't have the views and it steeps up there. And they're small, many of the lots are narrow and long. So I could imagine there, I think that would be fine. But other than that, honestly, I don't, I don't quite see it.
Julie?
I just wanted to clarify. I'm not in favor of amending any of the height requirements to make them more liberal, if anything. I'm into small sc... Oh, kiss the mic. No one can hear me online anyway, so what's the point? Oh, you all can't hear me? Oh, okay. Anyway, yeah, so I, I didn't mean to suggest that I think we should increase the height allowance. I am not in favor of that. I, I just was saying generally, if you're looking at a three-story, if there's a place where a three-story height is already permitted, I'd want it restricted to only if there's a significant setback. So I'm not interested in increasing height or increasing density or any of that. So I just wanted to clarify because I think that may have been misunderstood.
Judy, can you, or Judy? Julie, can you bring your mic over to the other side? Because when you turn your head, we can't hear you. So, yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
Ellen, did you have a comment? Anybody else comment, questions? Okay.
Okay.
So we can go move along.
We'll move along. All right. So kind of to what I was just talking about with articulation and facade modulation, I think that's a very important feature that can help identify an area. Like we were just saying, the downtown area is more, you know, straight facades with once, with some articulation. And then where you have a lot of the more Victorian residential properties right along Manitou Avenue, where, you know, they step back. You have a wall, you might have the porch, and then you kind of have the second story of the building. And I think you get that stepped feeling just naturally already in town. Excuse me. But part of what we look at with codes is providing those articulation standards. So, you know, in some of these no-man's lands that we're trying to identify an identity for, you know, we could talk about, you know, certain, certain... The building has to step back a little bit. And to your, to your point, Councilmember Wolf, you know, having things step back, step, setback, stepped back, having different roof lines, you know, just providing more, more variety in the building. So one way that we, we do that in a lot of communities, and a lot of communities also do this outside of codes that we write, is to have a menu approach. So where you might have a list of 10 or 20 features that are kind of what we've defined as the characteristics of Manitou Springs, and they could be anything from a pitched roof to a front porch to a window style, you know. And it doesn't have to be specific to any architectural style. It can be. It can be, you know, talking about stone at the base or, you know, some of those different elements. So you have this menu, and then the developer or builder has to pick a certain number of elements off of that menu. And it provides that flexibility so that you, you know, you still have creative freedom, but you're staying kind of within a certain box of, of elements or tools. So is that, is that something that seems palatable for, for this approach? I see. Okay. Yeah, show of hands, maybe, people who like that idea? Great. Okay. Yeah, any thoughts on that?
I'm just torn, and it's just because I think the visual, it doesn't work for me. So I see the visual, and you're like, "Oh, we can pick things." And I'm like, "Oh, it looks like Home Depot," you know. So I just, so I just really want to make sure that if we do have that selection, it's, it's interesting and inspiring, I guess. So that's my concern.
And, and this is an example graphic from another, another area where it was a little bit more, I don't want to say Home Depot, but it wasn't, you know, they were a little bit more vanilla, I would say. One thing that we will strive to do in this code is to create all, we create all of our graphics unique. We sometimes start from building blocks of other graphics, but we want to really create the essence of Manitou Springs in our graphics. So we will lean on you to critique us and say, "Yes, no, we haven't gotten there. We need a little more of this or that," so that we can make sure that those graphics really do speak to Manitou Springs. Great. So, you know, standalone design guidelines, this last statement, are often harder to implement on their own. It's nice to provide some, we call it flexible certainty, where we've all, as a group, developed kind of that list that seems okay, and then we're letting the, the development community choose from that list, and we know that it's going to kind of happen within that box to some degree, so... All right, next slide. I think I'm passing it over to Melissa now. She's going to walk you through some zone districts. And I, I realize it is eight o'clock, so I don't know how much longer everyone is intending to sit and listen and talk. Do we want to go for a while, or?
Well, we want to be done by Christmas.
Okay.
But we want to be done with everything by Christmas and have it in final form. So Counsel, if it's okay with you, let's, let's push on. We seem like we're making reasonable progress here. We're asking, I think, intelligent questions, having a good discussion. The rhythm of the meeting seems to be okay to me. If there's no objections, let's... Sorry, Tip, what was it?
Would it be possible to have a cap, say something like 15 more minutes?
Cap it at 15 minutes? Five more slides?
It's not too bad, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's get through those five slides in 15 minutes and then reevaluate where at. Sound fair? Go for it.
All righty. So I will do my best to get through these slides. Like I said, there's only a few of them, and some of this information is similar and does play off of the discussion that we have had tonight. So looking at the specific zone districts in each of these areas, it's up here. Looking at the assessment report, we have three kind of specific zone district recommendations. The first one is to assess the need for additional commercial zones as a result of the design guidelines. So do we need to look at more than one zone district, looking at commercial? Or can we kind of build them all into the same zone district and have more of a, a design guideline discussion? Assess the need for additional zone districts to address the destination tourism and neighborhood slash community commercial future land use categories from the Plan Manitou Comprehensive Plan. And then reclassify the redevelopment overlay as a zone district rather than an overlay. So starting with the redevelopment overlay, because it is the most straightforward, the purpose of, or the stated purpose of the overlay is to provide greater flexibility in the commercial zone standards to facilitate redevelopment in the URA, while simultaneously advancing the development standards and design objectives set out in Section 4.3 of the Manitou Springs East Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Also, within that redevelopment overlay language, straight from the existing code, is to identify desired design objectives, permitted uses, and development incentives. So based off of just that language alone, looking at the actual standards, we feel that it is more beneficial to reclassify the redevelopment overlay as a zone district rather than an overlay and rezone that URA to match the new district. So not changing the district standards within that overlay, but just taking it from an overlay to an actual zone district because the standards within that redevelopment overlay are different inherently from the underlying zoning. So in order to make it a little clearer for developers and for you all, pulling away that underlying zoning and just turning the overlay into a specific zone district.
I don't understand at all.
So not looking at changing the actual standards within the overlay, but it's, it's currently stated as an overlay, so the underlying zoning still applies. But the overlay and the underlying zoning are currently conflicting. So there's different uses that are allowed. There's different setbacks and standards. So when we read through that, that didn't make sense to have both of them. It is easier to generally take that overlay and just say that that's the zone district.
So is that the same thing as saying that you're just going to rezone? The proposal is whether we want to rezone that entire area to have the same, so that each parcel will have the same zoning requirements, as opposed to how it is now where some of them are commercial, some of them are residential, different kinds of resident, is that what you're saying? They're all just going to be like, it's, it's more convenient for you to just say the entire west end of Manitou Ave, for example, from such-and-such address all the way down to Serpentine Drive will be this one zone for the overlay district, instead of how it's currently zoned? Is that what you're saying?
So just the commercially zoned properties within the urban renewal area fall under this urban, this redevelopment overlay? So if you think about it this way, it's, it's more like there are two sets of standards that apply for those properties, and they're not the same standards. They're different uses, they're different setbacks, different heights, different development incentives. There's incentives that actually fall within the redevelopment overlay that can be more clearly just classified as a zone district. So you would be adding, changing the color of the zone within those currently commercial properties to something that is very clearly the redevelopment overlay. It is the urban renewal area. That would then really clearly follow that corridor master plan. So trying to align the actual underlying zone district with what that, that plan says. Does that help?
What I would suggest is that maybe we table the redevelopment overlay discussion and, and maybe provide for the whole panel that document. I mean, I've read it, I understand what it is, but it's pretty obscure. It's, it's only a couple pages. If we all could study it, we would understand what the unique characteristics of zoning in the URA is all about. It's just, you know, it's a, there's a lot of different considerations, and it's just, you know, you're, you're throwing something at us that we're not all familiar with.
Absolutely. We can bring that back. Like we said, it's, it's more of a straightforward administrative thing. We weren't looking at changing any of the standards, but we can bring that language back to you so you can look at it a little more clearly than having to think through it.
To clarify, this just a plot, you're just talking about the URA. Is that the only area in the city that has an overlay?
It is the only area that falls within this redevelopment overlay, yes.
Okay, and I assume that this falls under the theme of simplifying things? So it's, it's, for a great part, it's an administrative, kind of sort of, an administrator just to simplify the standards or the whatever.
Correct.
And has the URA weighed in on this at this point or not?
We've not had a chance to speak with them yet, but I believe Christine is working on setting a meeting up with them.
Because I would certainly like to hear from them on, before we make a decision as well on this. I, I think it's very important that they at least have the opportunity to make comments before we finalize anything.
We've had some initial discussions with the URA. This particular administrative issue, we have not discussed with the URAs yet. You know, I think it feeds into some of the discussion that was had earlier about looking at a corridor and what can be done there and promoting ease of redevelopment, ease of drawing businesses in, because then they're not looking at something so complicated as, "Okay, if I buy this parcel, this is going to be commercial. If I buy this one, this is going to be this. This has got this overlay. This one doesn't." And I, I think, you know, Alan's point a moment ago was, was spot-on. You know, we need to bring everyone to the same point of understanding this. And, you know, to the point that was made by Counsel Shada, it's garbly goop. And it is, if you don't, if, if we're not working in it and we haven't made sure we're using common language. So I, I appreciate that. And so we'll absolutely, we'll table this, and we'll bring it back and, and... And so, we'll absolutely, we'll table this and we'll bring it back in a different way.
I guess the other thing I'd like to say is, what does that graphic mean? Is the light blue part a floodplain? What is it?
So, this is the graphic from the Plan Manitou Comprehensive Plan that details kind of the future vision for this area. The light blue is the floodplain, but we left that out because it wasn't as important to the specific piece of the conversation. But this is a graphic that is in the Plan Manitou, the character area, opportunity areas section of that plan.
Thank you. Counselor Wolf, did you have a question? Oh, okay.
I just have a follow-up question to that. So, on this overlay, which was really confusing to me, because you've got pink dashed lines, so you have pink dashed lines in the URA area, and also where the trailer park is, and also where the now townhomes are, Becker's Lane Townhomes. So, I'm confused about, are those the specific areas of redevelopment in the URA, or is the whole blue area a redevelopment area?
I'm seeing issues with the graphic, so we'll bring back a different graphic.
Thank you.
We tried to use one that was familiar to you all, but it sounds like it maybe is not, which is okay. That's good feedback to get from you all.
And if we could have like a key, because, you know, like if it said on the lower left-hand corner, "All areas with the pink dotted line means X," whatever, this is where we're going to redevelop, or this is where we're not going to redevelop. But just to have a picture with colors and lines, it doesn't help. So, maybe like a key, so that we know how to interpret next time what you're trying to tell us. And then I'd love to see the two pages, I guess Alan can get it for me, but he mentioned when he was talking that he read two pages and it made sense, so if we can just see those, then we'll be good. Thanks, okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, it sounds like the redevelopment overlay is something we'll be coming back to at a future meeting, so if we could make a note of that, we'll look to Alan for guidance on the definitions, and if we could push on to the next slide then?
Absolutely. So, then looking at, going back to each of those four areas, opportunity areas that we looked at earlier, the west end of Manitou Ave., the east end, the El Paso, Becker's Lane, El Paso Boulevard, no, yes? Okay. And the urban renewal area. Do you all feel that these can, given the discussion that we just had, are the standards that you want to see in each of these areas different enough to warrant a different zone district? Or can they all still fall within the general guidelines of the same zoning district? So, what we're trying to see is, do we need to look at creating an additional or multiple additional commercial zone districts to meet that future character that we just had that discussion on? Yes?
You know, before I got here, I was looking up overlays and so on, because I didn't have a clue what any of that meant. So, I have, I have a clue now, but I'm still not overly confident in the pros and cons, the specifics and so on of it. Again, my sense is, I mean, I could answer the question, I'd answer the question, but I would feel a little insecure that I was using good judgment to answer the question.
So, then we can have more of a conversational discussion. Do you all feel that the future vision, the standards, the setbacks, the architectural features, the uses, that you want to see in the west end versus the east end of Manitou Ave., the urban renewal area, and then the small portion of commercial that is within El Paso and Becker's, they're currently all under the exact same zoning district? So, the same standards apply to each of those areas. Do you feel that, given that discussion that we had, that that should still be the case, or should we differentiate between them?
I definitely agree that these need to be differentiated. Okay. I've zoomed in on this, should the three areas be unique zoning districts? And to me, some of these lines, in terms of how they're drawn and whatnot, are somewhat kind of befuddling to me, okay? As an example, that mid-area, or I guess that we're calling kind of the east end, you know, then has a dotted line over that includes, I'm assuming Hiawatha Gardens. It's, the graphic is rather low resolution, and then starts to kind of include some stuff clearer over on El Paso. And so, some of these areas, I think, are really different in terms of what's going on, really different.
Okay. Do you think that the, that they are different enough to warrant those, the different zone districts between even within that east Manitou Ave. area?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, great.
Alan and then Julie?
Yeah, I think that definitely, the conversation so far warrants that we have, not necessarily three, but we need different zone districts for different areas. And the reason, like, right now, forty feet is the height limit, if you're commercial, whether you're on Becker's Lane, or you're on Crystal Park Road, or you're on Manitou Ave. And I've heard distinctly, people are saying that in a lot of the areas, we want to limit it to two stories. And, you know, we were faced on the Planning Commission, when there was a rezoning for the Becker's Lane property, it was commercial. They could have gone forty feet with our current code, and that would have been more awful, maybe, than the outcome that we had. And so, I could see like possibly the east end of Manitou Ave., the west end, certain areas, maybe we want it lower, but downtown, the buildings are already forty feet or more. So, that definitely, I could see having a more nuanced commercial zoning strategy, where we have different zones, and possibly there's only two, there's the low and the high. And everything downtown is high, and everything else is no more than thirty feet or something, or twenty-five, I don't know, some other number. So, that's what, my opinion.
Thanks, Alan. Julie?
I just wanted to say, it would help me, I had forgotten about the forty feet, but it would help me when we come back to look at this more, to be given information on what the current zoning. Am I doing this wrong?
What I'm doing, I want to know what the current setbacks are for the front, for the side, for the back. I don't know, so it's going to be much more meaningful to me to make a decision on whether we're going to change anything, if you tell us what it is now. But I also agree that each neighborhood needs its own guidelines.
Natalie?
I think the other part is, maybe, I mean, I'm sure Becca could weigh in as part of the creative district, but it is a part of sort of the creative circuit, and it'd be interesting to discuss what areas can sort of maybe have sculptures, support murals, or can we use sort of artistic moments to create sort of these unique zones, and just what opportunities there are for that throughout the discussion, too.
Thank you. So, the question is, should the other three areas be in unique zone districts? And we've had, I think, four people, maybe five, have kind of said yes to this. I guess we could do a show of hands. So, who would be in favor of unique zone districts? So, it looks like that's pretty good direction. I think we feel that uniqueness is neighborhood deep. Alan, please?
Oh, I just wanted to throw out one more thing to throw into the mix. If we're talking about refining the commercial zones, we might also think about, do we want to have two different, or more than one standard for high-density residential? Because, you know, right now, you think high-density, you're thinking about dwelling units per acre, but some places, you could have a higher density, but still not go up to thirty feet, which is the arbitrary thing. So, maybe there's some, I don't know if that's too complicated, but that'd be another thing to consider.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions relative to this slide or comments? Tip, did you, or Tip or Judith?
I just wanted, so, I think all of the discussion prior to this moment really indicated that each unique area needs its own zone, but I also think that each unique area, and I know we're going to look into it, this with regards to parking, traffic, landscaping, so it's another reason to have each zone have its own, you know, unique look and footprint. Thanks.
That makes sense to me, too. Thanks. I just, I love these conversations, because things I've never thought of before come out, and then I'm like, that's such a good idea. I just want, didn't want what Natalie just said to be lost in the mix. I could imagine as part of design guidelines to have, you know how, you know how in planning, when there's a development, they might have to dedicate property, but they pay money for the schools and open trails or whatever? We, I think we could do that in these districts for art and creativity. A lot of cities have a development, like one percent or something, that have to go in for public art for the community, and this might be an opportunity to do that, if we want, especially if we're trying to bring creative people, interesting. I frankly love that idea. I think that we err too often on the side of allowing people to develop, and of course we want development, don't get me wrong about that, but not to think about the public good element, you know, like in the East Coast, for example, you have to put a lot of money up into public improvements. We don't typically do that in Colorado. I wonder why we don't at some level, but that's a different kind of question. But I do like this idea. So, you came up at the end, I just would like to highlight that as a possibility, I don't want it to get lost.
Great, thank you. Anything else on the slide? Let's go on.
Great, and I wanted to thank you. That's exactly the feedback that we were looking for, and it was kind of the direction we were expecting to head, especially given the conversation tonight, but we just wanted to confirm. So, again, looking at the Plan Manitou Comprehensive Plan, there are two specifically called-out other commercial zone, future land use areas. One of them is the destination tourism, and then the other one is a neighborhood slash community commercial. I know this map is really difficult to view, but the destination tourism is only located in three areas. It is that area, the Trading Post entrance to the Garden of the Gods, the Cog Railway, kind of commercial area, and the Manitou Cliff dwellings. Those were the three areas called out within the comprehensive plan as this destination tourism, which was discussed as being different than the other kind of core commercial area of Manitou, which I believe is called the mixed-use commercial area. And then lastly, there is the neighborhood slash community commercial, which is the very small strip of commercial on Becker's Lane. So, our question here is, given, you can go to the next slide. This is kind of an overlay of what, again, everything that is commercial within Manitou Springs currently is within a single commercial zone district. So, the question is, do you feel that any of these areas warrant any sort of different standards, different zoning district than the rest of the other commercial areas? Given that the, kind of the current use is more of that destination, that tourism, that really focused on bringing people into those areas rather than your traditional retail focus, do you feel that the character is different enough to warrant a different type of zoning than the current, just kind of, rest of Manitou Springs?
Definitely, I would agree.
Yeah, I was going to say so, too. It's, I don't know, before a determination is made about what, if any, changes should be made, I think we should be told, what does it look like now? What are the rules right now? If those are cool, then those are cool. If those aren't okay, then maybe we have to create a special exception for those three areas. But before we talk about changes to those areas, I need a presentation on what is the status quo with those areas. Otherwise, you know, we don't have the information.
Absolutely, and we can bring that back. More of what we were trying to get to tonight was, again, the general overview of testing the temperature of, do we feel that they're different? We had a sense that they probably were, but wanted to get that confirmation before we bring back kind of what other communities are doing for some of their tourism, their destination, their kind of gateway areas. We have some other area, communities we can look at and bring some different ideas, like we did with the design standards. Here's some different options you can look at, given that, you know, we feel that they're different, but we wanted to verify that that is the case, and it sounds like they are, they are different enough to warrant bringing back some options for you all to chew on and look at.
I think that'd make for a robust presentation, then. So, we bring that back, and some of what we're already leaning towards, and what we think from a professional opinion, with a comparison of where are we at now, and continue to move that forward. So, no, the points are good. We need to all be on the same page, so we're not speaking different languages. And tonight was really meant to be intuitive. You know, we know, you guys know very well how these neighborhoods feel, how different areas of town feel, and so there is some part of this that is difficult tonight, because we're really looking for, what's your gut, you know? And that's sometimes really hard to quantify.
And I would say that this would be a really good, robust conversation for a community engagement. We really, this is one of those issues that we need to get community input on this as well, is having a very in-depth look at it.
I agree with you, good point.
Any other comments on this? Steve?
Yeah, I think it's important to have pretty defined guidelines, rather than, I'll know it when I see it, because that'll be too late, you know, to have something in place, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, I guess we can move along.
You can go to the next one, Jen, we answered this one. So, that was zone districts. Again, it was, it was brief and was intended to be kind of an overview, and we will bring back some more specifics, again, for you all to look at and to have more of that technical conversation. So, just a bit of closing and next steps. We are in Public Engagement Series Two, which Jen mentioned, the series of quick polls, and we will add a commercial zone district type discussion into that as well. As always, please spread the word, let people know that the process is happening, how they can get involved, drive them to the website. We work really hard with Christine and Alex to make sure that the website is updated, that we have all of the new information for everyone on that site. And then, the July 27th topics were kind of intended to be sustainability uses and administration, but kind of given the discussion tonight, we may rework that and add in some more topics, or some more discussion about the zone districts, kind of in light of those uses as well. So, that's kind of where we're looking at. Any questions on any of that?
Counsel Denise?
I just am asking a question. So, what is the next step now that they've given feedback? When do they get to read your comments that you're starting to put together? How does that work? Because if it's one last document, that's a lot to read, right? So, how does it work where they get to start reading what you're putting together?
So, we will be drafting the code in several modules, based on the topics that we're discussing. We do that to try to keep it digestible. It's still a lot of information that'll come to you in each module, but it will hopefully kind of help keep it with the conversations. So, what we're doing now is we'll take what we've heard tonight and start kind of wrapping that into Module One. We'll continue the conversation in July and continue to wrap that into Module One. I believe, like I said at the beginning, I think we'll do these three meetings over think we'll do these three meetings over June, July, August, and then probably starting September, we'll be diving into dissecting those modules. We can, we can deliver them ahead of that, so everyone can have a chance to really review them, but I think that's probably how we'll handle those September, October, November meetings? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
One caution, November, well, October, November is, is, a lot of that time, a lot of council's time is devoted to budget sort of issues then, so that's kind of like, we just want to be careful to, to balance the load, so that if, if you could get as much of that to us earlier on, I think that'd be helpful. We don't want to wait to the last minute, because we're going to choke if that, if that happens. Thanks.
Well, and something else we can do is we can bring summaries. So we'll put together a summary of, of what we heard tonight. We can send that to Christine, so she can send it to you all, and you can add any additional feedback, any, anything else that you thought of, you know, at 2:30 in the morning when you wake up and you're like, oh, I forgot to tell them that. You can add that or add that as a comment, and also verify that we heard the right thing, or maybe we didn't. So we'll give you that additional opportunity to give us a little bit more feedback before you start seeing actual language and actual options, if that helps.
Okay, thank you. Ellen, did you have, okay. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? I guess we're pretty well satisfied with tonight. Christine?
Sure, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Some of you who are on Planning Commission, City Councils, as well as other boards and commissions, folks in the community, you know, I don't want to dismiss the opportunity for some just good old fashions, sitting down with a notebook and a cup of coffee, you know, to get to the point of knowing what you want, sometimes it's reacting to what you don't like. And there are, there are things that we, we do now, that we have in the community now, that we may have approved, that planning may be running a process on. And, you know, I think that this last year has been particularly isolating in terms of getting feedback. So where there might be an opportunity in the past for some casual engagement, like, hey, what's going on over there, you know, like, do you have any insight? That is so valuable. So I, I don't want that to get lost in this. Don't hesitate. I would really love to continue to have these one-on-one conversations in addition to the technology gathering of data, because that has a very important place, too. Thank you so much for tonight. This is, each and every one of these sessions is very important.
Thank you. If there's no objections, we'll say that this discussion's satisfied for the evening, and as is our custom, the next agenda item would be any council correspondence, if anyone has anything. Mr. Bremner?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I got back from my rafting trip late last night, and I got a series of text messages that were confusing for me at first, and then we got an email today from Connie Rotenfelder, or something like that. Yeah, there you go. And so I went on my run this morning, I ran down there to see what she was talking about, and that MAPS project, I think there needs to be better signage down there, as far as where to go, as far as sidewalks and everything. I think there is a path for people to go to the other side and walk along Soto Springs Park, but it's not obvious. So I think better signage should be put in there. It is kind of, incidentally, it's a mess, but I think it's, it's got to be that way, because they're, they're doing some work. But I think they need to direct people better in that place. The other one, you know, I think is a question for Christine's department, is, is the Amarillo Restaurant, where they've, they've got some tables out there on the sidewalk, and I think, I think that's okay. I, I think that we're allowing that for people to put, but they, she was against it, just for information. I don't know if it's correct or not, what they're doing, but I'm just throwing that out there. And the other one was regarding the incline, base of the incline. There's a friend of mine said he was up there yesterday, and it was 60 degrees, and it wasn't raining, and they're running this diesel generator for heat. And I thought, well, that's a little bit absurd to be running that diesel generator for heat. So I went by there this morning, and they were running the diesel generator, it was 75 degrees. So I asked him, why are you running the generator? They said it was to charge their iPhones. And I, I went on a camping trip, and I have my iPhone and other devices, and I have these little things called jackories, where you plug them in, they hold a charge. And I never had to charge my iPhone but two or three times on a five-day rafting trip. So I don't understand why you need to be running a diesel generator to charge your iPhones. So I think that probably needs to be brought up. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Julie?
Yes, I also got text messages from Connie Brachtinbach, who's in Ward Three, and she wanted me to state, and apparently there's an email that she sent, and I haven't seen it, so I apologize if this is repetitive, but she wanted me to state tonight that she thinks there needs to be a better safety path for people to walk on, on the west end of Manitou Ave there with all the construction, that there's, the way it's set up is unsafe. And she also would like the city to consider eliminating the sidewalk dining, so that the sidewalk, the people walking on the sidewalk don't spill out into the street on the busy weekends, because there isn't enough room on the sidewalk. So those were her concerns, and then also that there appears to be a lack of enforcement of the smoking laws, which I forget the details of them, but you're not supposed to smoke right outside the business door on the sidewalk. You're supposed to be X number of feet away from the business, and so you've got all these smokers, especially, you know, happy hour and at the bars, standing right outside, smoking, and I guess they're officially supposed to walk, I don't know, in the middle of the street or far away enough, so that you're not polluting all the other people coming in and out of the business. So that was her concern, that the police weren't paying any attention to that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Partim?
Just quickly, the, an update on what the policy is on street musicians. That's been a big issue this week as well. So I, I don't know what it is, so I can't comment on it, but having been out there singing on the street and playing on the street, it'd be nice to know.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the City Administrator's Report. Mr. Chaney?
Yeah, so the MAPS project, I've already been in touch with Dole to figure out the best way to get some kind of sidewalk put out there. They just recently tore off that other side last week. So we are going to work on that to see if we can have a safe route, and I did notice that on Sunday as well, people walking on the dirt and the mud. So we are working on that, and hopefully they started today in fixing that. The sidewalk on about 700 Manitou Avenue, that was cleaned up somewhat. There's still some things there that are supposed to be picked up either tonight or by tomorrow morning. We did have a little issue where they poured gray concrete instead of red, which is a requirement for the code, so we are reaching out to affordable plumbing on that. And the asphalt, I think most of that asphalt's been picked up, but we are looking at as well on any damage to the businesses with the asphalt being tracked into their business. So again, that's a, we'll be talking to the company about that. I didn't know about the incline using generators to do their iPhones, but I will reach out to them about that, and there are better ways to do that. And Denise, I don't know if you want to talk about the street musicians or, okay, basically, the code covers that they are allowed to play music, and they can put out a hat or something for money, but they can't beg for money, and, and they can't lay around and still loiter. They should move around periodically to other places. So that's how it's written. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Denise?
Couple of things. We were, regarding the Amarillo Restaurant, we are looking into that, so we, we're managing that, and we'll look into it and see. There is a couple of things that we're managing through that. I did get back to you on a couple of things. Julie, you asked for two things, and one I have not gotten to counsel yet, is the water tank and the repairs. So I'm waiting for that dive report to get out to you. We just have not, Jeff was out again today, so I will get that to you, but the other items I did get back on. And, and regarding that with the Armadillo, is it's really regarding the bid and what we did and what we agreed to. So we do have to go back and look at it to make sure that we're adhering to it, because we're at 100% capacity now, and so that may change it. So we really have to go back and review that.
What kind of bid are you talking about?
With the bid, because it's the bid, and we did a, we did a CDOT, we had a grant, and we had those things, so yeah.
I think there's some confusion over the acronym for bid.
Oh, the Business Improvement District, which is downtown.
Okay, so you said something about, oh, I'm looking into the Armadillo. I have no idea what you're looking into about the Armadillo.
It's the sidewalk that's there. So we're looking into that, and we will be meeting and going from there. So it is an action item that we're looking at, and, and the outside, so we'll be managing that. Couple of quick things I do want to share is, we started a stop, we started a stop card, which is, and it was introduced, I think, started today, and we'll be doing the rest of it tomorrow, which means any employee can stop anything at any time due to a safety concern. And then it's stopped, they look at it, they document it, and they evaluate it, and see what steps need to be taken. So it's really to help any safety concerns that anybody might see from an employee perspective. So we put that in place. The American Rescue Plan Act, we did receive half the funds, and I want to correct a statement that was made last week. It is not shovel-ready, so we have to work very diligently to get this moving forward for the water tank. So we're working on that and seeing what we need to do. There's some planning and zoning things that need to be done. We have until December 2024 to spend the money, so we are working on it, and I will keep everybody updated as we go through that, and I just want to make sure that that is out there. Let's see, I have a couple of other things. We have received, and I sent it to you guys today, a couple of kudos for public work staff, and I want to recognize them for what they did, especially the water department, and how they've gone above and beyond. So I've received a couple of those as we move forward, and wanted to share that with you. I believe that's all I have, and what I have that you are wanting is the base of the incline. Roy will follow up on that. The sidewalk dining, we'll go ahead and do that. And smoking outside business doors, I'll have Roy follow up on that. I am out of town tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. I'm at the statewide city manager's meeting, so I will be out of town for the next three days. So Roy will be managing, so he'll follow up on the smoking outside the business doors and see how we can manage that also.
Yes, Julie has a question?
Is it legal for people to be parking at the top of Serpentine Drive when they first pull off of the highway? Because there are all these people and families and little kids walking up and down that hill with no sidewalk. It's not safe. I, I don't know if it's legal for them to be parking up there or not.
It's not, and it's one of the things that we both noticed this weekend, so we're going to be enforcing that. The other thing that you may see up there is there's some trash that's up there that we're managing also. So yes, we did notice that this weekend, and we'll, we'll be working on it. Thank you. And it is a big safety concern. I mean, you do not want somebody walking down Serpentine, especially, we saw, you know, somebody with a stroller and those things. That is not safe.
And just as a quick comment, I learned this last weekend that Roy and Denise do foot patrols of the city during the weekend, so they're out. Ran into Roy, he was playing with the parking kiosk, trying to, he and another guy were checking it out. So anyway, I thought it was Sunday at Father's Day, I thought he would be off, but he was out there taking the morning shift, and then Denise took the afternoon. So thank you for being out there amid all the jostling pedestrians and heavy traffic and so forth.
So that's not just us, that's all the managers. We're doing a MOD, which is a manager on duty on the weekends, and they come in all day, and their job is to walk around, see if there are questions, picking up trash, doing those type of things, and just being here for the employees. So if there's a concern, they can manage it. So we're rotating, and we're taking turns, and we're doing it from the entire summer months through September to Labor Day, and we're evaluating how it works. So yeah, that's, we're doing that every weekend, and everybody's taking turns on that.
Great, thank you.
I do have one thing I'd like to comment on. Yesterday, I walked into town to, over to Hiawatha, and there was a fairly large family that got out of a van, two or three more elderly people, and some adults and some kids, and they were walking up the, to the parking kiosk on El Paso, and one of the elderly individuals slipped and fell. And I went over and asked them how they were doing, and they, they weren't, they weren't tremendously injured, but that's a concern. That slope, people are cutting up there, you know, that you put that kiosk on El Paso, and they don't have any choice but to cut up that hill, and then they cut down, back down to their car, and it was, you know, it had been raining. So I just think, I know, I know we're really strapped, but I think that putting some steps in there and some clear entrance and exits from that parking kiosk is, really should be a priority. Someone's going to get hurt.
There is a kiosk in Hiawatha, but they went up there, and so we'll continue to look at that. We put that kiosk there, so that people in El Paso knew to pay, but you're right, it's causing people from Hiawatha to go up there. There's one other comment I wanted to make. We did do the fire training facility open house last week, and there was some confusion. At the last minute, we did make it a hybrid meeting, and some people did not realize that it was hybrid. We tried to get the word out, and we missed some people through that, and so I think it felt like we were not being transparent. And I want to make sure that everybody knows we were trying to meet the needs for people to come here or to be on Zoom. So in the future, we will not make a last-minute call like that. If it's sent, if an email has been sent out or a letter has been sent out, we're going to stick with that, because it really did cause confusion, and I want to apologize to the community for that. So we'll work on that and continue to improve.
Thank you, and if there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you. Oh, one quick thing I forgot. Next Tuesday is the fifth Tuesday of the month, so there's no meeting. Take the night off and enjoy. Okay, but in terms of council meetings, no council meeting.
I do want to make one more comment that we're doing for improvement. As you know, there was also a meeting scheduled that same night without us looking to see what else was scheduled, a police meeting. So we've got a SOP that's going out, out about how to schedule community meetings to make sure we do not have duplication of meetings. So we're working on that also. to make sure we do not have duplication of meetings, so we're working on that also.
[Music]